Okay, well, it'll work. I just don't have it on screen. Do you happen to know how to turn those on? Okay. When they're back, we can start. Is Elliot coming? It has to be somewhere. It's okay. I just need to be the stand next to it and do that.
Whoa, I called to order the study session of the Campbell City Council. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Councilmember Sizola. Vice Mayor Lopez.
There.
Mayor Landry.
Present. And I show public comment before the business starts. Is that correct, Andrew?
You're welcome to take it at any point. I just put it there on the agenda.
Okay, well, bring it up later again then. So we're gonna start with the Parks and Rec Master Plan Study Session, and we have our community developer. We have Natasha here and our consultant from Meg to present.
Excellent. Thank you, honorable mayor and members of council. So I'm Natasha Bissell, Recreation and Community Services Director. I will make this short and sweet. So tonight, we have Lauren Ivy Thomas, who's here to present kind of an update in where we're at in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. She's from MIG. And so I'm gonna hand it over to her to take away. We do have staff here if you have questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. Like Natasha said, my name is Lauren Ivy Thomas. I'm a licensed landscape architect and AICP planner, and I'm the project manager for this Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That said, I'm not the only staff member on it, just the one who's telling everyone to stick to the schedule. So the presentation outline, we're gonna try to keep it generally brief tonight, is I'll do about a presentation briefly. Then there'll be a moment for clarifying questions from the city council. I'll go back into presenting our preliminary needs that we've identified so far. Then my understanding is that there will be time for public comment before we'll get into the council discussion session. Excellent. So this is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the city of Campbell. It's the city of Campbell's first Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And the two purposes for this are to first identify community priorities and provide actionable recommendations to your community for a 10-year plan, and then also to provide specific attention to park funding strategies, operational efficiencies, creative partnerships, equity, access and equity programming, and special attention to the Campbell Community Center itself. This is a four-phase process. We've completed the kickoff from data collection, and we're right here at the end of Phase Two, which is the Engagement and Needs Assessment. So what we've done so far in that first phase was inventory your existing system, get background information on everything that happens in your Parks and Recreation Network. And then Phase Two involves our community engagement process, which included surveying and community workshops, and starting to identify those preliminary needs for your park and recreation system. That'll be followed after Phase Two with visioning, priorities, and implementation, and then finally bringing this master plan to completion in spring 2025. So now I'm gonna do a quick recreation system overview of what your system has. You have five types of parks: citywide parks, neighborhood parks, pocket parks, specialty parks, greenways, and trails. We like to categorize them into these types of parks so that we can understand the level of service they should be providing for their designation. In addition to these 76.6 acres of parkland that you have with city-owned parkland, you also have some additional resources within the city of Campbell that are not owned by the city of Campbell, which includes the Los Gatos Creek Trail, Los Gatos Creek County Park, and the Cherry Orchard Park, which is an H O A site. You also operate several major recreation facilities: the Campbell Community Center and Pool, Ainsley House, and the Campbell Historical Museum. It's important to note that these facilities are aging in place, and mix that with the fact that they were not designed for their current uses adds some operational pressure to these major recreation facilities. In terms of recreation programming, the city offers a gigantic variety of programs that are very well perceived by the community. We know that your 50-plus programming and your aquatics programming are the most popular. You also have a lot of bookings throughout the annual year with about 30,000 bookings per year. But of those, the majority of those bookings happen at the Campbell Community Center and Pool. So that was a kind of a high-level review of not only your physical park system, but the recreation programs that are provided within it. As part of Phase One, we also conducted a park condition assessment, and these findings were presented at our first community workshop. The Parks Condition Assessment looked at a variety of asset types, which range from athletics and sports down to specific park amenities, and we assessed the conditions of these assets in real time. And you can see in this chart here that the majority of the assets that we looked at were outdoor recreation. Outdoor recreation assets include picnic areas, playgrounds, sport courts, the city skate park, and within that one particular recreation type, recreation asset type, you have quite a few pieces that are functioning fairly. And if we look at your system overall, we see that over half of these assets are in good to excellent condition, with 13% in excellent condition and about 46% in fair condition. But nearly one-third of them are in fair condition, with over one-third of all assets in fair condition located at John D. Morgan Park. This is important because through our community engagement, we found that John D. Morgan Park is an incredibly well-visited site in your park and recreation system in addition to the Campbell Community Center. In good news, only about 5% of the assets are in poor conditions, but those are mostly located along the Los Gatos Creek Trail. Only four assets are in non-functional condition, which are also located along Los Gatos Creek Trail and Stojanovic Family Park. This is a composite site score that helps you kind of visualize how these parks are functioning based on our condition assessment analysis. So zero being a score of non-functional, this is an asset that is no longer usable. It cannot be utilized in any way. Or meaning it might still be in place, but it's not of best practice to use it. Fair means it's aging in place and will likely need additional maintenance or replacement in the very near future. Good means it's functioning, it's lasting towards its typical life cycle, and as long as it has the maintenance needed, it'll last for a while. And then excellent. Excellent assets are typically those that have been recently put in, or they're maintained at a higher degree where they don't require replacing in the near future. And looking at this chart, I'd like you to kind of look at sorry, Campbell Community, oops, sorry, let's go up, the Campbell Community Center and down. And so these are the assets that, so these are, sorry, the park sites that are rating a little bit lower than the rest of the system, and this helps us kind of qualify our overall potential recommendations for this park and recreation master plan. And this is just a cool heat map that shows those areas of needs graphically mapped in the city. So that's the conditions assessment that we've conducted. We've also completed quite a variety of engagements so far. Right when this project began, which was in May of 2024, we did a youth commission focus group to get their insights on what a park and recreation master plan process should look like. We've interviewed a variety of key leaders in your community. We've provided some focus groups and pop-up materials so that Natasha and her team could deploy engagement citywide. We've conducted a statistically valid survey that was completed in the fall. We recently closed our community-wide questionnaire, and then we held our first community in-person workshop on September 4th. So I'll just go through some of these findings. The statistically valid survey collected 400 interviews, and it was run from May 29th to June 9th, 2024. What's important about a statistically valid survey is that those who are surveyed represent a statistical are a statistical sampling of your community. So not anyone can opt into a statistically valid survey as they could our online questionnaire. So this gives you decision-makers kind of that statistical data of like, are you actually communicating and engaging with a statistical sampling of the community to date? And from these findings, we found that Campbell community residents really prioritize and use parks, trails, and community center. To a less extent slightly, they use the pool, but overall, the community center is actively very, very well-used. There is strong sentiment among residents that parks and recreation services improve the health quality of life. We know that parks, facilities, and recreation programs in your city are viewed very favorably. Community members are attracted to them, and they want to keep using those facilities in an efficient and productive way for themselves. Taking a big picture, residents, we find, are generally prioritizing improving and maintaining existing facilities over adding new. But there is some modest appetite in expansion of recreation type or potentially expanding programs themselves. There's also some willingness to engage in conversations about improvement specifically at the community center. However, we found in our surveying that there is not a great depth of public knowledge in terms of what the community center actually needs for renovation or to be improved. The online questionnaire, which we recently wrapped up, this was available to anyone who wanted to participate. We found it's been best practice to combine an online questionnaire where anyone can opt in with a statistically valid survey because it tends to create an even fuller picture of what the community is interested. That's also statistically valid. What's great about the online questionnaire is it's also a way for community members to be involved in the process themselves. It's a way to promote not only your park and recreation system, but also a way to promote the engagement process, right? So they can, they were able to click a QR code, share more information about the park and recreation master plan, and take their survey. So some key findings that we found from the online questionnaire that parks, recreation are super valued in your community. Overall, community members are very satisfied with their perceptions of park safety, the distribution of parks within your city, the recreation options available to them, and the programs, they consider them to be affordable, and that the parks are in conditions. The three most frequently visited sites are the Campbell Community Center, John D. Morgan Park, followed by Los Gatos Creek Trail, and Campbell Park. There is some interest in seeing more unique play areas and gathering opportunities. Overall, respondents visit the Campbell Community Center slightly more than they visit the pool itself, but that is holistically a very well-visited center. And very similar to the statistically valid survey, we found that when prompted to discuss improvements they would like to see, there was an overwhelming interest in maintaining and repairing what's existence, what's in an existence, rather than adding new. Any initial questions or comments regarding that?
I do have one question. At the very beginning of your presentation, you showed a table of all the parks in Campbell.
Yeah.
And I wonder if we can-
Would you like me to go back to that slide?
Yes, right.
Turn down the speaker.
Yes.
And then you also listed additional recreation sources within Campbell.
Yes.
There is one other park, and that is Hammond Park in the northern part of the city, which is really a park in San Jose, but the area, or at least part of the area, surrounded by Campbell residents.
Yep.
So there are a number of residents in Campbell that use that park. And I'm just wondering, it seems like maybe that should be listed as one of the alternative or additional, you know, parks that's readily available to our residents. I guess that's more of a question than it is a statement.
Yes, that's an excellent question. To keep things kind of clean and neat, because a lot of this analysis goes into city staffing operations and the maintenance of what the cities actually owns and their obligations to maintain it. So we do try to stay within the outline of the Campbell city boundary. But you'll see later in a couple other slides, we do include access to parks that are not owned by the city of Campbell or within the city's boundary. And so I can show you, I will show you a map later on that shows how parks from adjacent agencies are also serving your community.
So what are some of the reasons why Morgan Park is only rated fair?
That's a great question. So Morgan Park, and we'll talk about more specific needs later on in the presentation. But at a high level, overall, the picnic areas and picnic tables are in a fair condition, which means that they need an intervention in the relative near future for them to be brought up to a sustainable place. In addition to that, there's also some severe irrigation issues throughout John Morgan, which impacts not only your staffing in order of like operations and maintaining its sustainability sustainably. And so those are the two main factors that we've seen at John D. Morgan Park, and I think the plethora of picnic areas at John D. Morgan Park adds to that level of fair quality because there's just so many picnic areas in that park that are in poor condition. I will also add that the playground area at the north portion is in a completely different condition than the brand-new park on the south portion of John D. Morgan Park. And so we did also factor that into the overall condition of John D. Morgan.
Okay. And how are the individuals that are in the statistical survey selected? What?
I'll do my best. So we use Consultant EMC Research, which MIG uses pretty frequently, to provide statistically valid surveys. They are selected based on being a statistically valid sampling of your population. So in terms of demographics, age, income, they're looking at publicly available records to identify that percentage of population so that when you look at Campbell in real time, you have a statistically sampling of all those demographics in the people that were specifically targeted for the statistically valid survey.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions, but I also want to say I'm pleasantly surprised to hear use EMC Research. They have an excellent reputation. So that's great. I'm curious in hearing more about Stojanovic Park. One, because it's directly across the street from me, let alone in my district. But also a little surprised here because it's one of the newer, if not the newest, parks. Others would know better. But I'm just curious to hear about the, why the condition there was so poor.
For sure. The main aspect that really brought down Stojanovic's score is the closure of its current swing set. And so, to my knowledge, Todd and his team are replacing that swing structure, so it will be back into place. But we wanted to show that it's completely unfunctional right now. I believe it's like two wooden posts that have been closed. After that, as a landscape architect, Stojanovic Park has some really awesome assets in it. I really appreciate the design that's relative to the history of Campbell. And with that, there's a lot of informational signs throughout that park that kind of like have these cute little information facts about Campbell at it. A lot of the signs are in really poor condition, some of them to the point where you can't actually read what's on the sign. It's not legible. And that could be a combination of age or just not having the maintenance to clean the surfacing. And then there were a few play features at Stojanovic that were not in great condition. Some of the resilient matting right where you enter into the park, which is that cushy pillow surface, you could actually start to see giant rips. Kids are industrious. They like to pull things apart, and that was over there.
Great. That's really helpful. Thank you. And then I was also curious about the survey. Did it uncover differences in different geographies of the city? Given all the really great maps that were shared and that are in the packet, there's some real differences among them. So the summary that you're providing, was that pretty uniform across the survey, or does it vary depending on the profession?
That is a great question. We're still working on fully summarizing the findings from our online questionnaire. And we did have a demographic component where we had individuals know which council district they were located in, so that's information that we can certainly pool. Off the top of my head, no, I don't, I can't say I recall any strong geography-based findings, but we can definitely make sure to examine that when we finish the summary.
I think that would be helpful to hear because you know, we'll have a number of different criteria that we can look at, and so I'm not gonna get far into the discussion, but I think that would be helpful in informing us as how the public sees the need relative to which area they're in. I think that's gonna be helpful when we look at how that intersects with the maps and the survey data that we have. So I would be interested in seeing more of that, but that's my only question.
Totally, thank you.
I was at your first meeting, your workshop, and you might want to share with them how you did this. I thought that was really cool. The app that you had and that you were focused, just maybe-
The condition assessment app?
Yeah, but before you do that, the one question I had is, you only brought up the fountain at Ainsley House. You didn't talk about the courtyard. You said there was only one asset there, the fountain, but there's the courtyard and the gazebo and the lawn and the-
Yeah. Okay, so for, we considered, I think the fountain is actually an asset for the Orchard City Green Site. The Ainsley House asset, we kind of see it as more of an architectural recreation facility that does include a formal garden, but we weren't documenting things like courtyards or some of those other things you mentioned.
The shade structure.
Shade structure, yeah, if that answered that question.
So you maybe want to share with the council here, because I thought that was really cool how you did the assessment.
Certainly, yeah. I love that kind of, I can tell you my nerdy asset inventory, but I'm just noting, I want to make sure I get that Ainsley comment. Okay, so MIG has this really cool, it's an Esri application, and so that little screen rectangle there is actually a screenshot of what we see on our cell phones. And so this is a GIS-backed inventorying system where we created a methodology with the system, with the city, with Natasha's team, to make sure, you know, is what's excellent to us, what is excellent for you. So we established what those qualifications were. And then we actually took our app and geo-located in the field these assets. So this was me and my colleague Tucker. We spent a full day here, like nine hours walking through Campbell. It was like middle of June, very hot. And we walked up to playground structures, picnic areas, swing sets, anything that was on our asset list to do. We did a quick snapshot notes, and we have now a full inventory of how your systems function.
And they're all geo-located?
Yep, they're all geo-located in real time.
So bench, playground.
Exactly.
But you did not then do the irrigation and you did not inventory trees or anything like that?
No, that's a great question. We did not inventory urban forestry first, per se, but we did look at availability of shade as one of the assets. And overall, availability of shade in Campbell parks is excellent, really good. We did not look at infrastructure, like irrigation lines, electricity, HVAC systems. That typically goes beyond the depth of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, so we use our professional expertise as landscape architects and designers to, because we kind of know what we're looking at.
Was there any assessment of the problem with the geese?
Oh, the problem with what? Oh, the geese. No, actually, I don't think, maybe it was just the time of year, but we actually didn't see any geese when we were out.
That is a big problem at the community center, and I get complaints about the sports field and all the geese poop that's-
Oh, interesting, okay.
And what did you guys have there for a while? Didn't you have like a, at Edith Morley, they had a metal thing that looked like a wolf or coyote, and they moved it around, and wasn't there some aerial thing? There was something, they were trying to like have an aerial thing fly around at J V Morgan, so there has been some effort regarding geese. All right, any more questions from you guys? Okay, we're ready for the next part.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Those are really great questions. All right. Okay, so we did our clarifying questions. All right, so this is our access and health equity analysis. And so the first piece that we really want to take into account, and this, I hope, is gonna cause a lot of conversation and discussion on how does we proceed. This is our level of service access analysis, which is based off of a 10-minute walk for an able-bodied person. So typically, a 10-minute walk for an able-bodied person is about a half mile. And what we did is in GIS, we took your assets, we brought it out, that half mile, to kind of show what the service area is what the service area is of your park and recreation facilities. Importantly, your general plan 2040 aims to provide three acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. However, if you look at the existing parks owned by the city, you're actually offering 1.7 acres per 1,000 residents. If we include additional properties that aren't owned by the city but are located within Campbell, that brings it up to two acres per 1,000 residents. But in these areas where you see these broad, I moved my mouse, you can't see that now. But in those areas where you see those broad swaths of yellow, essentially all four corners of your community, those are considered park-deficient areas, meaning they don't have access to parkland within a 10-minute, within a 10-minute walk. Earlier, we did have a question regarding Mary Jane Hammond Park, which is at the north. You can see in this lighter gray, we actually did an access analysis for sites that are adjacent to the city. So you can see the walk shed of Mary Jane Hammond Park to the north, that kind of lighter green. And you can also see some of the walk sheds for San Tomas Park. So you can see that this is incorporating not only the sites that are owned by your city, but also adjacent recreation.
Real quick, I forgot to ask you, were schools and any of the features at schools are in inventory?
No, we did not include these in this access analysis. We noted them in terms of their location because we are aware that there are potential school partnerships that can happen. But this analysis so far has been focusing specifically on city-owned properties and city-maintained properties.
And the other ones that are the county, the trail?
Yep, the county, the trail, any parks that are within that 10-minute walk from San Jose and Los Gatos. It's important to know, looking at this graphic, that as your population continues to grow, if it does continue to grow, this level of service is gonna become even more concentrated, right? Because you're gonna have a larger, a potentially larger population that's requesting that same demand and access to parks. We also completed a health equity assessment, and this we- We also completed a health equity assessment, um and this we have found is really valuable in showing um the importance of parks and recreation in the public sphere. Um because we know through lots of data that parks are really good for our health and um helping you make decisions on how to prioritize recommendations for the future, having this level of information is is really important for you. Um so a little bit about our methodology here before I specifically go into the chronic disease burden is we pulled this information, data sets from the C D C's places data set. Um it's a data set that looks at over forty chronic diseases and health-related challenges across the United States. And what's great about this particular data set is that we can refine it to census tract level. So the shapes that you're seeing are because of the census tracts in Campbell. What we did is we collected, normalized, and combined those selected indicators to create composite scores for each of these broader topics. So for the first one that we looked at, sorry, first one that we looked at, which is uh chronic disease burden by census tract. The measures that are included, the health measures, the health indicators that are included in this particular asset, it's our assessment, include general health status, asthma, type-two diabetes, and physical stress, this is all self-reported. Um and so the darker the color, the higher the prevalence of that chronic disease burden. And so you can see that in the north and in that western um area around John D. Morgan and Campbell Community Center, that's where the highest prevalence of chronic disease is located currently in the city. Um onto our next factor is we looked at mental health burden, also by census tract. And the mental health burden is measured through the indicators of social isolation, social emotional support needs, depression, and frequency of mental distress. I do wanna add that all of these indicators are only for adults and they are self-reported, just as a a background context. Um again, darker the color, the higher the prevalence of of that condition. And here you can kind of see, it is slightly darker on that southwest portion and north portion portions surrounding the freeway seventeen. Next, we looked at physical inactivity by census tract, and this one is only one index vector, one in, sorry, one indicator, which is just self-reported um physical inactivity. Um and right around Campbell Community Center and John D. Morgan Park, you see the darkest concentration of lack of um in a of inactivity by adults. And then finally, we looked at the prevalence of disability um throughout throughout Campbell, also by census tract, to understand where these conditions are impacting um the community. Disability included any listing of debu- of disability, as well as hearing, vision, cognitive, mobility, self-care disability, and independent um living disabilities. And again, here, very similar to some of those other sites, you see a heavy prevalence of it in that western portion of the city. All right, so with that, um we've begun to identify overall park system needs for Campbell's Parks and Recreation System. Um please know that this this, these are not recommendations yet, this is just where we are, as Natasha said, a, you know, progress, a checkpoint of where we are in the master planning process and what we've discovered as consultants so far. Um so I'm gonna first present you with like overall system needs, general trends that we're seeing throughout your park system, and that's gonna be followed by specific site needs that we've identified so far. So the first of which is that topic of parkland access. Um your general plan twenty forty calls for three acres per one thousand residents. In reality, the city is offering one point seven acres per one thousand residents. Potential solutions for this would include bridging those gaps with partnerships with local agencies or providing um a partnership opportunities between schools, other recreation providers, other owners of recreation amenities in those service areas. If land acquisition or park partnerships cannot happen, then the city will need to consider higher investment in its park system because what will happen is that these park assets are gonna start to serve or are serving um more than what was what they were designed for. They're serving uh greater than a a half-mile radius of population. In terms of recreation facilities, what I um shared earlier in the condition assessment is that I I mean, it makes sense that your system has a lot of outdoor recreation facilities, that's what most park systems are, they're outdoor recreation facilities. Things like picnic tables, play structures, um your your skate park, those are in the fairest of poor condition, and you have a lot of them. Um in addition to that, the Campbell Community Center has a variety of identified challenges um specifically regarding modernization, renovations, keeping the pool safe. Um some things that are, that have been identified by the recent uh facilities assessment. And then regardless of how the city moves forward in repairing or replacing recreation facility assets, they need to be maintained. That it, that's an absolute in the parks and recreation system. Um I kind of just like this picture cuz this one on the far right, it's a picture that we took in the field with Natasha at John B. Morgan Park. You can see there's like balloons and actual kids gathering, but at the same time, you have Campbell Recreation Staff, Maintenance Staff fixing an irrigation issue. And so that's just emblematic of your park system as a whole, that however we proceed, maintenance is gonna be a topic. In terms of recreation programming, what we found is that um largely, community residents or those who took our survey are not super aware of Campbell's amazing recreation programs. But there is a lot of interest in more community events, gathering events, opportunities. That's what folks seem to be really interested in when it comes to adding or improving recreation programs. Um health equity overall, I think once you kind of blur your eyes and you look at these four images together, you can see that the area around Campbell Community Center and John D. Morgan Park are not only serving your community as a whole, but they're serving vulnerable populations. And so investment in these sites could really um get your biggest bang for the buck, right? You can, you can really contribute to this quality of life if those areas were improved. But also, we just know that parks and park it, parks and recreations overall improve the quality of life, and that is a a critical factor for why your residents are living in in the city of Campbell. So just presented the overall um trends and needs that we're seeing through your ci- through your city, and then I forget which one of you asked, but they wanted to talk about specific site needs, and so these are some of the specific site needs that we've identified. The first is the Campbell Community um Center itself, it's in urgent need of pool renovations. Um the enhanced, it requires enhanced entryways and safety and wayfinding currently, right now, the city sorry, the pool is not operating in its safest way, just in the fact that lifeguards have to stop lifeguarding so that they can potentially manage folks who are moving into the community center. There's no obvious community hub center for the community center. Also, the community center, it was, it wasn't designed as a community center, and there's some inherent challenges in that. It's designed as a school because it is a school. And so that requires some creative thinking on how to support clear wayfinding for this community hub that's not quite a community hub. Um and then finally, the skate park um at Campbell Community Center is is a liability for the city in terms of safety and in terms of the quality of those assets for safety. So those are, those are the three main things that we've identified at Campbell Community Center. At John D. Morgan Park, as we've talked about, there uh the majority of assets that are in fair to poor condition here are the gathering and picnic areas. And the reason why we find this to be really important is that it's clear that your community is interested in gathering opportunities, and they wanna have areas to do that. John D. Morgan has the most gathering opportunities, but it also has the most most gathering opportunity places that are in um poor to fair condition. Also, on top of that, as I previously mentioned, um the irrigation system throughout John D. Morgan needs some special attention. And um we've heard from staff, and we've also visually just seen the irrigation challenges of the site. And then finally, the LaScatis Creek Trail. Um trails, pathways, and non-vehicular opportunities to move through the city are a clear priority for your community. And the LaScatis Creek Trail in particular is seen as um an exemplary asset to do this in the city of Campbell. However, compared to the conditions of assets throughout the rest of the system, it has some of the assets in the worst condition. Um some of them of which are failing, and and many of those are the outdoor fitness park or stations along the LaScatis Creek Corridor. And I think now, um do we go to public comment? Or do you wanna go straight to council discussion?
And I know we have at least three people in the audience. Uh do we have anybody online, Andrea? No, so does anybody in the public wish to make any comments? Come on up if you do. Oh, you're good, okay, I couldn't hear what you were saying. All right, so I don't see anybody in the public that wishes to speak, so we'll bring it back to council for discussion. And I'll make note in the memo, uh packet page five, there were specific questions, there was four questions in here that they are asking, where there are findings that surprise you. The second one is, do you feel that something was not identified or missing that you feel should be included? The third is, should the city increase its level of service for Campbell Parks, facilities, programs, and maintenance? And if yes, then this is the modest increase or substantial increase, and should one component be the main focus? I E. Parkland facilities, programs. And then the last one is, it will take significant financial resources to accomplish and or address all the findings in this report. What are the top two priorities for camp's council? So if we wanna start the discussion around these uh four questions, who would like to start, Serena?
Um I've, I have a question first off, if that's okay.
Yes.
Start with, um could you say a little bit more about um the deficiency of the assets along the LaScatis Creek Trail? What what specifically are you referring to?
Specifically, we're referring to a lot of the park course equipment or the outdoor fitness equipment, so these are typically, um, I mean, as you can see here, the when these were super popular several decades ago, the bread and butter way to put these in was um board and post wood timber structures. Um they've aged significantly and they haven't been replaced. And so new fitness equipment structures have different standards of care, different, different level of modernization that makes them a little bit heartier. Um so overall, the assets along the LaScatis Creek Trail that are designed for recreating, specifically fitness equipment, they're not in, they're not in usable condition for that purpose.
Great, tha- thank you. Um I'll, I I'm not necessarily gonna go um one by one through through the questions, but just give some overall takeaways for me. First off, I, you know, this is really fantastic that that we're doing, so I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that that's going into it. I I would like, um, um, there there's a couple of details I I think would be helpful for me to, I I think, get closer to final, final answer. One of them being what I shared previously about are there geographic differences in the surveys that that we're seeing? I think that in combination with the things like the the mental health, physical activity, disabilities um would just be interesting to see um either whether that correlates or 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 whether it's y- y- you know, a wash, we should really be looking at those other factors primarily, um along with um uh population um density. The the other thing that um I'd be interested that that is really more um on our staff is to break it down a little bit more into what the cost would be for some of the specific things that have been discussed. For example, um at J D M Park, the irrigation, to really understand what what that would be. I'm I'm sure some of that is information that we have because these um the, these are probably things that staff has um has has looked at um in in the past, and that, you know, we're aware that cities have been issues, but there may be things that that haven't been um identified. So I would really be interested um in that, which gets at my answer to um the, really the third question, the sub-point here, which is that my sense from hearing this is that I'm not sure that it's gonna be one category of things. For example, parkland, that that is is gonna be the thing that we pick out and really focus on. The overall thing that I'm gonna be looking at, um for lack of a better term, is bang for our buck. And I think what what that's gonna mean, um, once we have some of those additional details, is really gonna be um looking at the totality of different needs. What are the things that we can pick out and are gonna have the highest level of impact? Uh uh again, for example, the irrigation, where that may free up things like making better use of these gathering spaces um at at J D M Park. So looking at the things where there's kind of a nexus of of different um needs and 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 we can be efficient cuz um I I, you know, we're we're not gonna be able to do everything, every single thing on the list that that's gonna come up. Um but I think some combination of of that, um along with looking at um population, looking at partnerships, looking at what correlates with with the heat maps of things like uh disability, um uh mental health, um other things. Um and and then the thing that I will add to that is looking at what's at the very bottom of the list. So, you know, again, I may be biased with Sujanovich Park, uh and others can can tell me if that's so. But I'd really look at the things, you know, what what's at the very bottom of the list, so that we don't have anything um at the very lowest level um of of condition that could potentially um be liabilities or, you know, I I don't wanna have assets that that are totally um un- unusable. The other thing I'll I'll add that would just really um doesn't necessarily fit in any of these categories, but that would be interesting to look at, is really thinking hard about whether um the skate park is still the best use um for that property. Um it it may still be, um, y- you know, I I I I know uh usage and patterns and trends may have been different when, when it was put in. But uh given the fact that at best it would require uh so what sounds like substantial time and money to um renovate and bring it up to a point where it's not a a liability. I I mean, that word raises um red flags for me. Um really taking this opportunity, looking at holistic financing, is is there something else that, you know, if it's gonna take the money anyway to bring it up to usable standard, is there a better use that fits with where the community um is now? I I don't know the answer to that, um but I'd be really interested in in having that come out of this discussion. Thanks.
To, she said, one of the top.
My, yeah, my my feedback is that I don't think it's it's gonna be one category of things. So I'm trying to give more the criteria, the factors that I'd look at in in deciding that. Yeah, that's my feedback.
Thank you, Serena.
So I, the one thing that I was a little surprised at, and I don't, not sure if I'm understanding the map correctly on the health equity. But it seems to me that the health um conditions for people that were closer to the pro- the parks, like John D. Morgan and the community center, was higher than those that um don't have direct access to the, to the, to the park or to the facility. So that that was a bit surprising to me. I I think overall, it was a good, a comprehensive report. Uh I don't know that we necessarily need to increase our levels of service because it doesn't appear from what the surveys have indicated that we need to do that. But maybe um we prioritize what we have and and what we're doing. And to me, the 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 major one is is the community center, and that that's an asset that, um, and I've been harping at staff for the last couple months about it, the condition of it, because it's, it really needs to be, um it's the jewel of our city, not only has a theater and all the cla- classes, but it has the pool, and um I I really feel that it's neglected somewhat in in maintenance and and ongoing maintenance, and it needs to be on a on a regular basis so that we maintain that property so that um residents can enjoy it and and it the facility, you know, lasts longer than than um the condition that it's in today. And um the one part of the survey where residents were um uh indicating that they would be willing to have a discussion about the maintenance of the facility. I I think if you're just a a a regular, or not a regular visitor, but if you just go there and you look at the pool, you think, oh gee, that's a great pool. You don't really realize all the conditions that are um not right with the pool. And so um I I think um that that's part of the um that we need to engage people more about the the facility and what really needs to be done. And and that that will take signi- significant resources to um address the ongoing maintenance and and repair that. The other thing that I think is important is, um you mentioned was the partnerships um with school districts with um you know, um the county on the on the on the Creek Trail and and doing better, having some kind of a better relationship. I know at one point in time, you know, the city did have uh agreements with the school districts for the use of the school facilities, and now now they're all locked down, and you you can't access um school play equipment or or the fields or anything on a weekend. play equipment or, or the fields or anything on a weekend or even after hours. And I, I know when I, my children were young, we, we lived in a neighborhood where the school is, you know, a block away. And now you can't, you can't access it. So I think working towards some better partnership with the school districts might, um, help with the, to address the open space, um, requirement that we're lacking in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I have several just kind of general comments. First of all, one of my points, um, is exactly what Ann just talked about. The school yard used to always be open. And anytime, uh, probably less so after school hours, but more so weekends, things like that. You could just go down and, you know, use the basketball courts and the, and what have you. And now, like you say, they're all locked up. It's, it's unfortunate in a way. In fact, several years ago, when, um, we had an excess of funds, uh, uh, a dream that, uh, we know, we still have, but at that time, we really did. Uh, we actually gave money to the schools so they could in, expand and kind of enhance their school yards. Because we knew and they knew that our residents were accessing their parks and we wanted to help them. So we, we're in a position to do it. But I'm wondering if we could work more with the schools and see if they would, you know, especially on weekends, uh, allow access to the, to the district. So that is one of my points. The other thing was, several years ago, as we had sort of evaluated and designed parks when, when there was real estate available for purchase and access, we oftentimes made decisions on the use of the park based on, um, the neighbors that lived in the immediate area. So that Virginia Park, for example, specifically was catered to very small children. Even with Stojanovich Park, the thought was there were a lot of young families that lived right around there that could come to a neighborhood park in their case. And so it was designed more for younger children and younger play structures. Part of that also is dependent upon the size of the park. Obviously, with a park as large as JD Morgan or even Campbell Park, you know, uh, with JD Morgan, I mean, there's room for ballfields and, and so on. And I know we share some of the property there at JD Morgan Park with the Campbell, uh, Union School District as well. Fortunately, it's all open to us. A, a couple of just other miscellaneous comments. For example, there are some other assets the city has. So for example, you wouldn't really think of downtown Campbell Avenue as a park, but we have the ability to close off the, the downtown for festivals, for, um, the Sunday Farmer's Market and so on, uh, without seriously impeding traffic because, you know, it goes around the loop streets. And, and so that serves as a form of temporary recreation in a sense, even though it doesn't count that way. And then there are a few areas, um, one of which is actually near where I live, uh, over by Lawellin Avenue. Um, where, when this neighborhood of, uh, rather nice houses, um, were constructed, they constructed a, a park in the middle of that. Uh, specifically however, uh, for people who live there. Uh, and so some subdivisions, the larger ones are able to design these parks, if you will. Uh, they're not open to the public and so we can't count them as a part of the city in a sense. But they serve a purpose for the people who live there. And then, um, finally, uh, Campbell is, um, unique as a city in that we have a lot of percolation ponds all over the city. And, um, many of those, most of those percolation ponds are in fact accessible. So for walking purposes and, um, when Kaiser went in down on Winchester, we also paid for the design and some aspects of modernizing that perk pond, um, area there so that it looked better, but it's also accessible for people to walk around. So there are some things which I'm not trying to make them count as park space, but are sort of recreation space, if you will, for walking and a few other things, uh, that, that are available. And then finally, I'm, it's hard for me to sort of feel that, um, the survey regarding health status, for example, could be tied into parks when there are many factors. So for example, many older people now who tend more to have chronic diseases were people who probably could afford years ago to buy a house in Campbell when, um, when it was much more affordable to do that. When one person in the family had a job, we could afford to buy a house. And they did, and the lots were often large enough. And now people have continued to live there, um, and they tend to be older. So their health status is different than some other areas. So there are other factors which contribute to that. I, I'm not sure how much you can really tie it into, um, neighborhood parks and status of the park and, and things like that. Except, oh, and people tend to seek out parks where they want to go, even if they have to drive. Which is not unreasonable. So those are some of my comments. In terms of priorities, um, for us, I, I would definitely think continuing to reevaluate and refurbish and maintain the quality of the parks that we have, um, since there's so little new potential space available to us, uh, is important. Now would be a priority for me and updating equipment. And, uh, we, we do have some plans. We're talking about some of that later tonight, uh, to enhance this skateboard park, for example, and really modernize that with some new equipment in the future. So fortunately, I, I think that's kind of on one of our burners that we plan to spend some money on. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Great. So I'll comment on some of the things I already heard. I was surprised, just like two, Ann and Dan both said about the health evaluation. The bad areas are around the biggest parks. So to me, it's kind of like, is that really, uh, causal effect, I guess is the right word, is, is the cause and effect the lack of the park? Because there are the parks, but they're the worst areas. They had the highest burden. The mental health of a, within the 10-mile walk of a park, that, that's where all the big ones are. So to me, I don't see that correlation. But I do know, like for instance, off of, um, Winchester and Hamilton, we have a senior tower. So I didn't see anywhere in this age breakdown or where certain neighborhoods have a certain age. And like Dan was saying, Stravonovich was designed around really the young kids. Are the young kids still living, really living in that area? So there was no breakdown by age. Because then I think the age factor then could determine, well, if Stravonovich doesn't have the young kids, why pay to replace the young playground? Maybe it's a middle-aged playground. Or the community center really needs more senior services because the tower is there and the seniors are in close proximity to that. So I would have liked to see some age, uh, related statistics. I already brought up to you about the Ainsley House and like what were assets that were counted? And you said trellises and shade structures, but those are gathering areas. So for instance, the Ainsley House is a gathering area, but it wasn't on your assessment list. And I know you had a lot. That's why I kind of wanted you to talk about what you did because that was an extensive amount of work to geolocate everything. Um, the perk ponds, there is areas along, um, Winchester, uh, Har- or Harriet, no, Hacienda that the perk ponds do have access and it's mostly just walking. I don't know that the valley water has any other features, maybe a bench. But nowhere in here was anything about valley water land. Um, and the perk ponds are a really big deal, uh, for the people that live there. Um, the private open space, uh, if you're showing a statistic of proximity to an open space and very specifically the Lawellin one has a huge park in the middle. So by saying, well, it's a private, and then saying this area is deficient in a park, well, not really. Because the private development does have a large park. So I don't know how you add that into all this factor, but somewhere I think we should be locating these little, um, like that one, for instance, on the well and the private open space. And then, um, the type of experiences. Uh, you've designated assets, you've said, for instance, along the park or the creek trail, the park course stations are in the worst condition. But is that still what we really need? That, that definitely has aged out. From the use standpoint, you're not seeing a lot of these, uh, park course facilities necessarily be putting in now. So there's been this kind of change in design features. So a little more about the types of experience. Uh, yeah, I just, I know this was a quick presentation and going to your meeting, the workshop really was helpful for me to see all the breakdown that you really did have. Let's see, uh, okay, I talked about that. Schools. Uh, maybe Todd, just shake your head or Natasha, do we have any joint use agreements with the school anymore? They're all gone. One, we have one still. Which one is it? Jog, because of the back area of the property. Yeah, okay. So that is something, you know, can we look back into that? I, I know the schools are trying to lock down and, but they used to lock it down during school hours and then the weekends and the evenings it was open to the public. So, um, look, maybe look into that. Um, considering what are the priorities, um, maintenance, 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 um, the more we can do, the better. Uh, you know, I know we try to do the best we can, but our system is aging out. And so this is important in our budget discussions of, you know, when you start looking at staff allocation and money. You know, it's not just staff, it's the cost of all this maintenance. Um, you mentioned community event programming as was a high on there. Uh, that's why I was kind of curious why like shell, shade structures and trellises weren't counted because those are community gathering areas that could have events and programming. Um, and then, uh, you talked about the thousand, one, what was it? Within proximity, the 3,000 square feet per thousand resident, or the three acres per thousand residents. And we don't need it. We're at 1.7 or something like that. How do we add to that number? And, you know, land, of course, is a high value, but this is where these private open spaces come in. Because on a new development, if you have a housing project that's under development, they're adding parks and open space. So you can't really say that neighborhood is deficient because it is not. It's deficient in what's open to the public versus what is private. So, um, and, you know, where could we add them? And what I thought again was interesting about these health maps is in the outline areas where there is no park, the healthy, they seem more healthy from all the charts. So, uh, you know, to me, that isn't a causal thing for the open space. Um, okay. Um, and then, um, what is the emerging, uh, I don't know if I want to use the word technology, you know, where is the future? From your perspective as a consultant, you guys are highly regarded. Where is the future heading? You know, are these park courses, I brought that up as an example, is that really something we do want to replace? Maybe that's not what we want to replace it with. Uh, we just added the story walk at, um, Jack Fister. Have you been out and seen the story walk?
I have not.
You got to go out and see it. They put a story and you walk around the park and it's a paragraph and you read the storybook as you walk around the park. So things like that are kind of the new emerging, uh, things that are in, uh, parks and open space. Uh, pickleball, I think we have one toward at the, that's a very controversial, but things like that, like where's the future?
Yep.
And then, um, the skateboard park is on our list later tonight to talk about our ARPA money. Uh, so what Sergio was saying, is that really like the right place, the right location? And my last note is, well, I brought it up in the meeting, where's our orchard going to go? We are the Orchard City. It's on our logo. It's on our everything. And we have, I think, five fruit trees out at, uh, at Edith Morley. And my thought was the lawn area from the fountain in front of the theater to, there's like a lawn area over there. Non-functional lawn area, get rid of it and put in orchards. So there was no, nothing in all this of, uh, where we can put our orchard. But thank you very much. I think you guys have been doing a great job and, and look forward to you coming back and talking about visioning with us and bringing back more information. So is there one, anybody else, Sergio?
Yeah, sorry, well, I go first and I get ideas from everyone else's comments. Um, I, I won't repeat things, a lot, a lot of the insights I agreed with, but there are two new things that were inspired by things that others said. Um, one of them is, I, I would think also, um, of, about dogs. And the reason I thought of that is because Sujanovich, when that was opened up, to allow dogs, that, that, that actually, I, I do see a lot of young kids there. I see a lot of dogs. I'm not sure which is which. But thinking of that too, because that is such a, that has such a high concentration of pet-friendly apartments to think about, um, you know, how our facilities serve that as well. Whi- which then ties to the next thing. Um, and I, you know, I won't repeat what was said in terms of the different, um, heat maps of, of different, um, demographics. But one of the things that I thought of that could be a, a factor in that, um, is looking at where we have, um, rental housing versus, um, single-family homes and then, you know, everything in between. Um, because there might be a, a, a area of single-family homes that is underparked on the map, but maybe they, they all have big yards. And so, uh, maybe, you know, that need is being served in others. Where, whereas we may have, uh, very dense apartment building and, and, you know, we're planning for nuance to come in in different places. And, and that's where you really want to think about, especially where you have new developments coming in. Making sure that we have the public facilities to then serve, serve those needs. Um, I think that would be another really important factor in our decision-making as, as we move forward.
Alright, so I can put here?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, and my speaker's not on. Thank you very much for coming and we look forward to you coming back, um, follow up on the things that we talked about.
Thank you. I do, I do just want to add one thing. The private park that you guys have talked about by Lawellin, we, we've included that in the inventory and the access mapping analysis. It's, um, I think called Cherry Orchard Park, but we have included that.
Oh, okay. So I did see that Cherry Orchard Park. So that, that is the part.
Okay, I was wondering where that was.
That, that, that is the, oh, the HOA park that you guys have.
Great, thank you.
And, and maybe add to these housing developments, we've had three large ones recently. Uh, one is at the end of Lawellin, they're going to take out the, what is that?
Uh, get the, uh, the, uh, what was the main one?
The Ming Kwan was there. There's other facilities that are there right now. That whole area is going to become a housing, uh, development. So you might look at what recent housing projects we've approved and what open space are in those housing projects. Great, thank you. Alright, um, we're going to take a break. The council meeting might start a couple of minutes late, but we'll try to start as close to seven as we can.